Let's get started. Welcome, everybody. Thank you. We love it when we have a positive packed house here, so thank you so much for attending. We'll go ahead and get started with Pledge of Allegiance. Let's see. Brad?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alright, we'll go ahead and do roll call. Jake, you want to start us off?
Jake Colette, board member.
Briann Diedrickson, board member.
Kim Dickerson, board member.
Eric Peterson, superintendent.
Corey Holmes, board member.
Brad Eller, board member.
Jason Watt, business administrator.
Great. Okay, we'll go ahead and start with a couple of celebrations and we're going to start off first with our preschool update and celebration and we'll invite Tara Boswell up here. Welcome and thank you for being here.
Thank you. I just want to take a second and really say thank you to you for your support for our preschool program. It has just evolved over the last 20 years and it's continuing to evolve and we're really honored to be here and celebrate our alignment with the district goals. So, really quickly, we just want to say that we are so excited that we are able to support students and families in attending their neighborhood elementary schools with our preschools. So we have two preschools in every elementary with Daniels Canyon actually housing our expansion site, so there's three preschools in Daniels. And there's the Early Start District Program for our little ones that turn three after September 1st in Heber Valley Elementary. So it's, two of the schools actually have three preschool programs running. And those are two and a half hour programs that go four days a week and we are so excited that we get to have our staff supporting up to 382 preschoolers in our district throughout the year. So really quickly, if you guys can show, we're visual, concrete preschool people that like to, you know, the abstract isn't, but that's a lot of, a lot of families and students that we get to impact and we're very privileged that WASATCH Board has supported having our early childhood programs so strong. In fact, we have many programs that come to visit our district to see how our preschool is running and operating because of our high quality status throughout the state. And we also have a dedicated and amazing staff, which is on the next slide. I'll have Stacy just hit. We took this great picture. As you can see, a lot of them are here today. Every preschool has certified teachers, paraeducators, specialists, and of course, parents that are supporting it and we are just so grateful to be part of WASATCH District and that you include us in everything WASATCH. I also just wanted to speak for a second on behalf of being a mother of students that have gone through WASATCH and started off in preschool and is now a grandmother who has a little one that's in kindergarten but also attended our preschool and just can speak to the intentionality and passion of our starters and getting students ready for preschool. It's pretty amazing. And with that, I would love to invite you to come any day, except Mondays, we don't have students, but to come in and see the great work that's going on. It looks like play, it feels like play, but it's learning and it's very intentional and it's planned. So we would love to have you there and it would just be great. I think you'd love just to see what's happening in our preschool programs. So with that, I'm going to introduce our Ms. Holliday is going to speak next as the students call her.
Thanks Tara. Again, I'm just going to start with a huge thank you for allowing the opportunity for preschool to be here. I am a, my name is Amara Holliday. I'm a prior graduate of WASATCH High School. I currently have three students in WASATCH School District and I have been teaching into the district for 10 years, nine years with the preschool program. So just to echo again off of what Tara said, to see the growth that we've been able to make in the last, the last nine years and just how much more we're supporting the community has been a great pleasure to be a part of and a real blessing for our district. The visual is a great representation of just how the, of the students that we support and the impact that us as teachers have on that community. Building a foundation of connection within the schools, with their teacher teams, our district teams, as the school teams, our school district, preschool included, to ensure the goal of a professional learning community or a PLC district in each of the schools. This support comes from all levels, the school board, so thank you, our directors as well, our administrators, and of course, the educators that we have in our schools. The goal of knowing what we want students to learn, how we know they're going to get there, what we do if some of our students haven't gotten there, and the extension of what we do for our students when they have a documented proficiency in a skill, is supported, into support of those four critical questions. We do that by, and it's kind of a bulleted list on the slide, as a district, each of our five elementary schools have a pre-K through five PLC process going on. I just can't, I just want to take a quick moment to just hint on how exciting that is for me to continually hear. We're a pre-K through five district. It's been a really big push for all of these educators sitting in here, just showing that growth that we do. So that's awesome and that works on connecting our essential skills as well as working in our grade level and then connecting for next grade readiness with those PLCs. Each school also has an elementary preschool representative on their leadership team or also known as the guiding coalition. So making that connection all the way from pre-K to five in connections with our learning and academics. Each grade level within each school forms a PLT or preschool, or a professional learning team within their professional learning community. They meet weekly with their team, their paraeducators and their specialist with that goal of identifying instructional needs and then the growth for the programs and the classrooms. As a district team, we are really lucky to even have the opportunity to meet as a PLC for preschool once a month. And there, that's where we share instructional strategies, needs for curricula, best practices to ensure that high quality programs are offered at each of our elementary school, within the preschools. We have additional opportunities with that, our professional learning days that allow us to look a little bit closer at the data, the instructional strategies at each individual school. And then also helping our schools, teachers, students and families, the needs that we've heard throughout our individual schools for the community. With building these connections, we really feel that it is a support of Superintendent Dr. Peterson's goal of building connections within our community and in our schools. And to talk a little bit more about how that support looks within our families and our schools, we're going to invite Ms. Olivia Hales or Ms. Olivia to kind of talk about what that looks like and some awesome opportunities we've had with that.
Okay, so as she said, I'm Olivia Hales. I teach at Midway Elementary where I went to elementary school. I'm also a WASATCH High School graduate. But I'm going to speak today about how our district goal of connecting our students and families to our school. So preschool is often the very first time a child steps into a school setting and as we want that first experience to be positive, we know that because we are high quality preschool program, we want each student to have a strong start to their educational journey. So our district preschool team feels that connection is the heart of what we do. And we know that children thrive when they feel connected to the school with their families. So that's why we provide opportunities for parent and family engagement, both in the classroom and at home. We build bridges between school and family life, helping children feel supported on both sides. So we provide opportunities for parent and family engagement, both in the classroom and at home. So one meaningful example was our Coral Reef Family Day. As you can see our picture here, each child was invited to create a sea creature at home with their family. On the day of the event, one little boy arrived with his mom, both beaming with pride over the seahorse that they had made together. Just a few days later, his mom passed away unexpectedly. I'm profoundly grateful that our program gave them that shared experience. A memory he will carry with him through the rest of his life. And this was an at-risk family and I don't, I believe that they wouldn't have had that opportunity to do that project together and for him to have this memory of his mom for the rest of his life. It's not, this is, just reminds us that it's not about, only about numbers and letters. This is about building relationships and memories that matter. Our preschoolers are also valued, valued members of the larger community of the school. I know that our principal strives to involve our preschool with every school activity we're doing. She involves us with specialists like PE, music, art and library. And we also have an awesome special ed support team with our preschool and they, they do a great job helping our special needs students to be prepared for kindergarten. And these opportunities not only help them feel like they belong to the school, but it prepares them for a smooth transition to kindergarten. So as you can see, as we strive to connect children and families to their school from day to day, offering them a high quality preschool experience and meaningful opportunities to engage, learn and grow. So thank you to our board and our superintendent for your continued support in giving our youngest learners that best possible start. And now we get to hear from Dr. Amy Andelen. She is our external coach from the state.
Hi, I'm Amy Andelen. I'm excited to be here and I'm grateful for this opportunity to share with you guys some of the celebration of the preschool program. So I am the project coordinator of the Utah Pyramid Model. It's out of Utah State University, out of the Institute of Disability Research Policy and Practice. And WASATCH has been one of our implementing sites. We have 40 sites across the state. Something super exciting about WASATCH and all of these amazing practitioners, we were the first program, and I say we, because I've been with WASATCH for eight years, so I count myself in as we. Anytime WASATCH comes up, I'm like, that's mine. That's a we. We were the for fidelity and overall, it's called benchmarks of quality. And so we look at two different parts. We look at each classroom and then we look at the system. Because we know that we can have phenomenal teachers, but if it's not embedded into the system, the way that WASATCH does things, soon as we have teacher turnover, we'll lose the practices that we've had. And I've been able to say over the last eight years, we have maintained that level of quality. So Pyramid Model is really looking at social behaviors and supporting emotional literacy for students, which then in turn reduces challenging behaviors. So we provide training and support for the teachers through coaching and professional development. So when Amara speaks to the level of support of PLCs, that framework fits so perfect in with what we do that you guys have became a model district across the state. So as your goals reach to PLC and reaching fidelity and high practices, not only do you have that implementation in your classrooms, but I want you to know from a state perspective and from the perspective of the Utah State University, we look to WASATCH preschool as the standard. That is where we want all programs to reach. PLCs have been shared across the state with other programs where programs come to WASATCH to look at implementation to then go back. So when you think about, I, I think of like the quality that the teachers give to their students. I want you to know that that quality extends beyond the families in your community. The experience and expertise of your teachers has spread across the state and the impact will change communities. So it's amazing to think that what you have here, your, your guys' work extends and the appreciation that programs have from the willingness of your district to let multiple programs in. So I appreciate the support of all admin of the board. What you find here, you do not find everywhere across the state. What you guys have here is you've created something special. And you see that with the dedication of the staff. And so we have a little, we were able to have our state leadership team meeting where we have sectors from across the state, Department of Health and Human Services, Head Start, up to Early Intervention, all the Part B. I mean, it's a pretty big thing in the state and so it was awesome to have Tara come and we wish that we could have taken all the teachers because we know it's their work. And so it was really important to Tara to have the picture of all the practitioners because this was achieved through all of them. And so to be, yeah, the only program in the state to reach both, it really is incredible. So, yeah.
State champs.
State champs!
Thank you so much. That was amazing. What a great report back and of everything that's been going on and I, I think it's amazing because, you know, I see familiar faces out there of, of the people working with our little kids and, and, and I know some of you individually and just the love that I know that you're giving these kids and helping them connect and, and it's not, you know, I, I don't know how many people out there think, oh, preschool is a place to drop off kids and they get to play for a few hours and go home, but it is not that. It is a place where professionals work with kids to help them develop at an early age. And so thank you for all your hard work. I, I'm just amazed by this report. Thank you so much. Does anybody else have anything they want to add?
I do. I was like getting emotional during your report and I was like, why am I getting like all teary eyed? Sorry, but it's because my boy was in preschool, uh, last year and I personally experienced everything you just said. Like, he was academically ready for kindergarten, but he was loved and he made connections. And that's thank you to the Daniels Canyon team and I know kids all across the district are getting that. So I am just so excited for your celebration and for your accomplishment and from the bottom of my heart, thank you for the work you're doing for kids because it matters. I've seen it at my own home. So I would just give you a standing ovation.
That's great. Anyone else?
I, just real quick, I, if I heard correctly, I think you said that you, you thanked us for creating something and again, I don't know all the, the details necessarily, but I, I hope you feel supported and that you guys are the ones that created something. We, we can support, but we can't create what you guys created and we can't thank you enough for what you've done, not us, you guys. So thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate kind of the same thing. Like I'm looking at some, my wife's favorite place to sub is preschool. She doesn't, she doesn't sub a lot. She picks her days, but she's forward to the preschool days and she usually goes to Old Mill and that, but thanks to all the teachers, but I do want to shout out to Tara. Tara is a unique educator, phenomenal leadership ability and a diehard advocate for preschool. And without her, I don't think we are where we are. And so thanks to her.
Maybe just one note on the funding where this is funded by two, two main sources of money. A grant that Tara manages and writes for every few years that provides a significant amount of money coming into the district that I do almost mean for. She writes, she writes every bit of but usually for, for that. She does a really excellent job. She's literally one of the people I've worked with. And secondly, a previous board station to generate the funds, finance this, which locks in funds at a level, will be able to maintain this and not have to, they don't have to fight for the grant for this. It a significant difference, I think, in scores and, I mean, so we'll talk more about that, but that's, I mean, these guys are the heroes, but we had board members who were willing to do some hard things to, to generate funding for it.
Thank you. Um, I would love Kersa a photo, but can I ask the group to just stay for the next celebration because some of you may or may not be a part of it? So, um, let's do a photo and then or should we do a photo after? No, let's do a photo after. Sorry. Yeah, before we get into, okay. So the next, oh. May or may not be a part of it. So the next celebration, we want to celebrate WASATCH Parent Network. And along, like with all the things that we talked about, that you talked about with preschool, WASATCH Parent Network is also a group that helps connect our kids and just, and our teachers and our staff, like they support. These are parents that go into each of our schools and, and they're just a support group that does great things to show our kids that, that we love them and show our teachers that we're there for them and it, you know, it's a lot of parties and this is just a photo I dug up from, a blast from the past. Sorry, Janie, I didn't get permission. But I just wanted to show like how great WASATCH Parent Network is for each of the, and I see faces out here that's part of the preschool that maybe in the past was part of PTA or WPN. So it just kind of all, we all work together and, and for that common goal of supporting our kids, helping our kids develop, supporting our teachers, supporting our staff. So I just wanted to spend a few minutes celebrating. So is there anyone bring everybody up that are you? So go ahead and introduce everybody and if anyone else, yeah, there you go. Okay.
Actually, I'm going to have them introduce themselves. And which school?
Julie Tidwall from Old Mill Elementary.
Sam Wilson from Midway Elementary.
Jen Edgell with JR Smith Elementary.
Amanda Bittner with Heber Valley Elementary.
And there are a few, obviously, these are presidents from these schools, from the WPN. There have some that had some family obligations and couldn't be here with us tonight, but these women are absolutely amazing. I'm Diane Glenn. I'm the former district president for the WPN. Deana Blood is the current president, but she was sitting next to me and she got a phone call from her husband and had to hurry and rush out to take care of some family issues. So she asked me to come. Sorry, I'm second, second order.
Fabulous Diane. Diane's been around volunteering for a long, we go way back.
We go way back. So the WPN, if you don't know what it stands for, W, WPN stands for WASATCH Parent Network. So back in 2020, we had had our fill with the PTA and the politics involved with that, shocker. So we decided to form our own group. So we sat in the backyard of one of the members' homes around the pool, socially distancing, and we talked about what could we do to help our community and our schools and to be more effective with what we do. And so we formed this group and with the support of the district, of, of big support from the district, we were able to do that. We are housed underneath the Education Foundation, so we do use their nonprofit status and they help us with our accounting and our accountability and it has worked out beautifully. There is a stigma that comes with PTA. When you say that word, some people are kind of like, but now we're just like, you know what? We're just parents. We're here, we're all working together and it has been a wonderful transition. So, so you know, some of the things that we work on, we do a lot with teacher and staff appreciation and, and meals. It's really important that we try and take care of, of our staff that take care of our children. It's very important to us. We also participate with bus appreciation, so we try to recognize the bus drivers and the staff that work there as well. Something that I'm very passionate about are the food backpacks that we send home for the weekends. We help, there's several entities in the community that work to pull this off. And last year, we helped provide some meals for the weekend for 10,626 meals. That's a lot. And these ladies are fantastic and helping with Literacy Month, Kindness Week, Red Ribbon Week, Bike Safety, the Emergent Art Program, which we could not do without the school board. As you look around the room, the artwork that is hanging are the winners from last year's art contest. And we're ramping up, starting for this year's art contest as well. We also are involved in fundraisers to be able to provide these services for the teachers and the kids. And I think, I speak for every school saying that they would love more volunteers. Everyone's like, mm-hmm. We all know that. It is an amazing program. So much less stress than when we were with the PTA and more interaction, I think, with the, the schools. That's very positive. So thank you. Thank you for supporting us and hosting us under the Education Foundation and thank you to these amazing women who put in countless hours to help pull this off and make it available for everybody in the district. So thank you.
Diane, I, this is how I started, was I, I walked down the hall, the kindergarten hall of Old Mill Elementary and the PTA president at the time said, hey, do you want to help with Red Ribbon Week? I'm like, sure. What is, what does that entail? And 15 years later, you run for school board. So anyway, but the, these ladies and all of you, actually, everybody in this room, you, you spend countless hours at the schools. You can pretty much pull up a mattress and sleep there, right? Yeah. You live, eat, breathe the, the schools and the children and, and I just, I'm so glad, I'm, I'm glad we did this together, like on the same day, just to celebrate everybody and thank you so much. Thanks Diane. Thank you. And we'll get a picture too of our WPN. Anybody have any other words?
I would just say thank you and, and echo Diane's call that they need volunteers. So parents watching, if you want to get involved, there's big jobs, there's small jobs, but please reach out to your school and get involved because we need, we need help. And they, they make our schools better. So thank you.
Our, our kids, it, it's, it's data. There's, there's research, research that proves that when our parents connect with the kids' schools that it, it is a, it makes a positive impact on the schools. There's tons of data out there, tons of research. You can just Google it and you'll find it. So stay involved. Thank you for so much for being involved. I know a lot of even the preschool teachers have, you know, your kids in school and you're involved that way. And so stay connected, stay involved. That is the superintendent's goal is connectivity with students, with the child. So thank you so much.
Go ahead, go ahead, Eric. Oh, I was just going to say, so like my wife has been involved with the WPN at Old Mill and Tempanogus and now we're getting older kids and so they don't really want her in the school anymore, I guess is what it comes down to, but the amount of work that's done by the WPN on behalf of the kids is phenomenal. It's just from one thing to the next, one thing to the next and it never does stop. So thank you for that. And then I was just thinking like, just watching you guys up here and watching our preschool teachers and just different interactions I've had this week. We have phenomenal people associated with our schools, just the best. How can our kids not be successful when they interact with human beings like they get interact with constantly? So very fortunate on every front to just have good human beings interacting with all kids in this valley. It's a blessing for everybody.
I want to go back to the preschool. I, I want to thank you for coming and, and highlighting what you do and the success you're, you've had with this program. It means a lot to me because I was on the board when we approved the funding for this and as I, I still have some time left, but I know where my window is going to shut. I'll just say that. And I have to live with some of the decisions I've helped make. And I, I have to live with some of the decisions I've helped make, um, really for the rest of my life because I plan on living here. And when we go to truth and taxation and raise your taxes and our taxes to fund a program, um, it's hard. And like I said, I have to live with that because I'm raising my own taxes, I'm raising my kids' taxes, I'm raising my parents' taxes and, and it's, and as I reflect about the decisions we've made, this is one I feel good about because I can see the difference it's making, um, in our, in our young people's lives and setting them up to have success as they start school. So thank you for coming and sharing that. It makes me feel good that I know that sometimes I make a good decision. Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, let's go ahead and do some photos and then we'll take a quick break and then we'll get into the rest of our meeting. Okay, let's, should we, Kersta, you want to guide us on photos? Okay. And do you want the board, without the board?
Down here.
Okay.
I have looked to yours.
I know.
This is mine, so I know that church.
Yeah, everybody left.
Be room on the front row.
Seriously, you, they do always sit on the back row.
Well, there were preschool teachers.
All right, we'll keep.
Like y'all to move up. Thank you.
I know, it's like we have a disease or something.
I'm still advocating for us to be down there.
I am with you.
I'd sit around that table.
Yeah, Jake and I want to sit down there. Okay, we'll go ahead and move into public comments if anybody has any. Public comments, is there anyone online? No? All right. We will close public comments. Okay, we'll go into consent items. Is there a motion to approve consent items?
I will make a motion to approve the consent items.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent items approved. Okay, action items. Here we go. Number one, approve to initiate boundary consideration process, Dr. Campbell.
Well, um, as the board may know, you've been in the middle of a process to create a new boundary for our new high school, which will also include a boundary change for our middle schools as we keep those, those together. Um, as part of this process in the law, um, it is required for a school board to formally initiate a boundary change process in a, in a board meeting, at least 30 days before you have a public hearing, um, which at this point is scheduled for October 28th. In that also, um, 10 days before that 28th, you'll also send out another notice of meeting for that, for that hearing to give, um, the public an opportunity. For those that are listening in, um, this, this board has spent a lot of hours, provided a lot of opportunities for the public to see the things that they're thinking and to receive public comment and we're still in the middle of that process. So, um, just want to thank the board for all their hard work and the hours that they put into making sure that the entire public has an opportunity to, to be heard through this process. And having done, uh, many of them, I can say that, um, this process has been probably the most exhaustive process that I've been a part of, um, as it comes to boundary. There are always tons of work and tons of emotions involved, um, in this process and I just want to thank the board for, for the way that you've handled this so far. So, uh, formally, um, what we are asking is for the board to, um, approve the initiation of a boundary change process with a, um, public hearing scheduled for October 28th.
Okay, um, let's, are there any comments before we move into that? Any, somebody have anything they want to say, add? Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and move right into that. Um, Eric, so I, I'd like to ask for a motion in connection with the need to adjust school boundaries as provided for by applicable Utah statutes. Can I get a motion?
Is that me?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we, uh, well, let me read this statement. As required by Utah Code Section 53G dash four, dash 402, 24, I move that we formally initiate the process to change school boundaries for the 26, 27 school year, including through issuing the notifications required by law to parents of students that may be affected as well as to the relevant counties and municipalities in our district. That we set the proposed boundary changes for a public hearing and final decision on October 28th, 2025. And that Superintendent Peterson be authorized to oversee and implement the steps required to ensure compliance with the public notice and any other requirements of the state statute.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I, I do have a comment. So, um, so the October 28th, that's our board meeting and that's when we hope to be able to present the boundary changes. Is that what this is saying?
And provide an opportunity for the public to have a public hearing, but you'll also notice not just tonight, but 10 days before. As part of that, we'll also send mailers home to every family as part of the code.
And the purpose of the public hearing is so the public can be heard, they can come and comment.
Correct.
Right?
Yep.
On the options that are out.
Yes, yep.
Do you think that meeting will be here or will we have to do it somewhere else?
That's a good question. Um, we probably should look into somewhere else would be my guess. We'll look into a, a more suitable venue for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, number two, consideration to approve the 2025, 2026 Fraud Risk Assessment Report. Dr. Watt.
The, uh, Fraud Risk Assessment is a checklist that we do at the request of the state auditor, Utah State Auditor, and in conjunction with our independent audit that we do each year. It's a measure of our district's risk as it relates to potential fraud in its, uh, accounting and, uh, um, Business Services Department. And so it's a, it's a document that we fill out and then, um, it's, uh, submitted to the state auditor and to the local board for their approval. Um, it mostly has to do with, um, internal controls about, um, internal controls that are, that are part of generally accepted accounting, uh, principles so that we ensure that the money that we receive and expend are done so in accordance with best practices. Also, it ensures that we have proper, uh, policies and committees in place that help us to ensure that, that these controls stay, um, current and that we are, uh, that we are recognizing any potential issues and taking steps to, to mitigate any, any risk of fraud. And so we scored in the very low, um, risk level, which of course is what we are shooting for and should expect each, each year. And so we talked about this some in, in our study session and so tonight I would, um, ask that the board approve the fraud risk assessment as, uh, as presented to them.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 25, 26 Fraud Risk Assessment Report as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion, questions?
I just appreciate the internal controls the district has in place and all the work to make sure that everything is done right. So thank you.
I want to thank, uh, Jason for, I, I know it can be a really stressful time period when they're here, just trying to provide all the information that they need and, um, it, it's a lot of work and I just appreciate your calm and the, um, I have confidence in you and trust, um, that, that you're leading the district in this, as the business administrator and, um, just appreciate the hard work that you do for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, consideration to approve the non-exclusive lease agreement for Strawberry Communications. Dustin.
Good evening. Just seeking the board's approval to accept this lease as, as presented here, uh, with Strawberry Communications. They want to use some of our, um, extra space in our fiber building that we have. So specifically what's in this lease, um, I don't know if you're familiar with a, like a server rack that you may see on TV, they want to occupy half of one of those and pay us for it each month and possibly use some of our district-owned, uh, dark fiber that we're not using. And they, they came to us with this agreement. John Hagan, who's the managing partner of Strawberry Communications, has been a good friend of the district. He's helped the district out multiple times, especially in the technology department, uh, has been a really good partner. If there's any questions or anything I can help clarify.
And I noticed it, it's, it can be changed, it's not binding for the set timeframe. So if there came a point where we needed that extra space.
Uh, yeah, there are some ways to, to change it and get out of it. I don't, we'll never be out of space. So especially with the, the new high school coming online where I don't foresee anything ever being anywhere near full, so.
What are they using it for?
Uh, just for some of their, their equipment. So they're a broadband provider, so mostly it would be networking and telecommunications equipment. I'm sure they'll terminate some fiber in there as well, so.
Is there a motion?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the non-exclusive facilities lease agreement with Strawberry Communications.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, consideration to purchase a timing system for Wasatch Aquatic Center, Sean Kelly.
Okay, so as you know, we have a swimming pool and that swimming pool gets used a lot. Uh, electronics and water have a hard time mixing. And tonight I'm here to propose that we update our Colorado Timing System. This is a single source. This, the timing system that we have is a Colorado Timing System. These, the, tonight I'm asking to get approval to just get some new components of that system. That's why it's Colorado Timing and only them because the other components are working. These are the touchpads, the starter gun, uh, they plug into the Colorado Timing components that we already have, so we're bound. And Colorado Timing is the forefront in aquatic timing anyway, so we have the best. Just over time, these touchpads and things wear out from corrosion and the connections break down. So we need to update them after 10 years of use, they're getting worn out. To let you know, half of this, approximately half, is being raised from rental agreements that we have with outside entities that use our pool for their meats and we charge them a little extra to try to recoup some of this cost. So tonight I'm here to ask approval to update the components from Colorado Timing Systems in the amount of $21,145.
Is there a motion?
I will make a motion that we approve the purchase of the Colorado, Colorado Timing Systems in the amount of $21,145.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions?
These, I, these items aren't branded or like, they're not logoed for the school or?
No. They just, they're plain, we can use them for both schools. We will at a future time be coming to talk to you about equipment for the pool that's branded, but at this time, these are not.
Is this the first time you've had to replace some components?
Yeah.
Just so you know, somebody asked if we were building another pool at the second high school.
Did you please say no?
Oh, we did. Actually, everyone can verify that I said no.
Yeah, that's good. We love the pool, as you know, and it's a great resource for our district and our students, but it is a maintenance upkeep for sure.
But it's constantly used?
Constantly used. More so now than it ever has, just so you know. Jared and his staff, great, they're, it's clean, it's great, it's used all the time. Our classes are, uh, attended more than they've ever been, our open swims, it's, it's really a high-functioning pool. And again, we have a lot of people that want to come here and swim for their competitions because it's one of the best pools in the state for that.
Where are we? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, Sean, consideration to purchase a vehicle for Wasatch High School.
Okay, so we, uh, this is the past teacher cool-to-care car winner. With the end of the termination of that lease, uh, Mr. Labrum offers that car to the teacher at a discounted rate. The teacher at this time said, uh, I'd love it, but I can't afford it right now. The high school had approached me, said we need another car. I talked to Mr. Labrum and said, is it possible for us to get that same deal? The answer is yes. So tonight I have a couple of things. We have bid what a brand-new Ford Edge would cost if we were to buy that this year at $41,500. And the retail, if you were to go buy this car off the law from Labrum or any other Ford, the book is for $27,600. We're getting a bid from Labrum Ford below book at $22,105. I think in your packet you saw the rationale for us getting rid of vehicles. Uh, we have 50 approximately. Uh, we have fifty approximately white vehicles. Uh, those are used daily by district office, by tech people, by the high school admin. This car tonight is specifically, there it is, uh, going to be used at the high school where we have four new assistants. They will use this car, uh, to travel to away games and to other meetings. It's four-wheel drive, it's safer, it's better. They do not make Ford or Chevy cars any longer. So, in the future, when we come and ask for cars, they're going to be Ford Edges because that's the entry level now and they're four-wheel drive. We can't get Malibus or any other, uh, Fusions or anything else. So, as you look tonight, I have three cars that we are going to try to get rid of two of. There's three that meet the criteria. Uh, the two that I want to get rid of are two thousand and seven models, so they are worn out, if you will. We will put them on the state site to, uh, get rid of those and auction them off soon and then we will trickle down the other fleet cars that we have and we'll be down one car is my plan right now. We have three that we could get rid of. One of the things we look at is if they leave the valley and some of these cars that meet the threshold, we just drive them around town. So, we have a couple of older cars that people like because they're large and they can put things in them, so we will keep those. The tech department has a car that would meet the criteria, but they would like to keep it because they just drive it from school to school and it's safe and maintenance is low on that and they have very low miles that they put on it. So, tonight, I'm here to seek approval to buy a twenty twenty-three Ford Edge for the price of twenty two thousand, one hundred and five dollars from Labrum Ford.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we, uh, purchase, uh, vehicle, the two thousand, twenty-three Ford Edge for twenty two thousand, one hundred and five dollars for the Wasatch High School.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
This is something that's already budgeted, it's coming out of the budget.
Yeah.
Yep.
I really like your explanation, your clarification of what you're doing with the vehicles and I love the criteria that was created, I think that's, or updated. I think that was really good for us to see and, you know, for, for the community to see that, hey, we are using these vehicles, we are, you know, we're using them to the lifespan that's to a point where it's safe, you know, as long as it's safe. So, I really like everything that you said and explained. I think we needed that update, so thank you.
Sean, I appreciate that you're, even some of them that should be taken out of fleet, if you want to say, you're still willing to use them because they stay in the valley.
Yeah.
As long as they look okay and, let's keep running them, so, thank you.
Some of them still have use. Some of them, again, if they stay in the valley, we have a couple of Crown Vics, obviously don't make Crown Vics anymore, but they're very useful in some of our areas and the teachers say, "Please never get rid of them." We have a couple of maintenance trucks that would beat the criteria, but we never take them out of the valley, they're, they're very useful for us. Uh, but when one of those things happen, I think this is a good way for us to have a criteria to say, "It's time to get rid of that and we have justification to buy you a new one."
Especially with prices like that from Labrum.
Yeah. Very generous.
Yeah.
And I, I appreciate the conversation we had earlier about the need, that you, how big the fleet is, how often it's getting used and that there is a need for another vehicle so that we can make sure people can travel to where, to things they need to for work and that they're going to be safe. And I appreciate Labrum giving us first dibs at that price. I mean, that is, that's, in order to get a car at basically half-price, that's an amazing deal and they have been a great partner to us.
They have.
Great, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, board report, does anybody have anything to report or comment or bring up?
Um, so, I have been thinking a lot about, um, some of the events that have transpired over the last thirty days. And for me, one of the things that sticks out is that discourse and dialogue is extremely important. And I think having the community meetings, being able to talk to people about boundary changes has been extremely important, um, even though we may disagree. And so, from my perspective, one of the things that I have, um, decided to do, which I know this will be a shocker for some that know me, is that I have decided to be, um, to engage and encourage dialogue that allows me to be, um, to disagree, but do so agreeably. So, I can still have conversations, I can still disagree. We may not come to a resolution on something or, but we can find a way to meet in the middle, we can find compromise and we can find a way to move things forward, which is what I think we need and I think the community needs to see that we are capable of doing that.
Thank you for sharing that. That's interesting that you bring that up because Superintendent and I had a, a conversation recently about debate, discussion, dialogue and the difference in the three and it's exactly what you're, what you're talking about. Dialogue is so important. It's a two-way conversation, trying to understand each other, don't always have to agree, but, we as a board, we're up here making decisions and we, we have dialogue with each other to, to come to, come to decisions all the time. And that's, that's so important, that, that relationship that we have with each other that, um, where we have dialogue among each other. So, thank you for sharing that. Does anybody else have anything?
I just think that's a great point you bring up. Brad, and I have been told numerous times that I have an unhealthy level of optimism, which I didn't know was a thing, but I guess that's a thing. And, uh, forgive me for using that again, but, uh, in a weird way, we have a really great opportunity. This is not an easy thing, uh, splitting boundaries. And with everything that's gone on, it, it's okay that, I think we look at it as an opportunity to come together instead of divide us more. And if we can run with that, use what you're talking about and use this as an opportunity to build our relationships as a community instead of split them or divide them with these two high schools, uh, I think we would benefit greatly from taking that perspective.
And even beyond the two high schools, I mean, I, don't you think our, our world, we have enough division, right?
For sure.
Right, Brad?
Yep.
There's enough, there's enough going on, we don't, we don't need it here. So, thank you, thank you for sharing that.
One thing along that front and, uh, you know, Kim and I did have that conversation and it kind of stemmed out of, you know, we are so fortunate to be part of the BYU Public School Partnership with this district. Like it has benefited this district for forty years. Um, and one of the things that it does, and Eric leads this for our district, um, uh, one of the many things that Eric leads for the district, is a program called Associates, um, and where we get our teachers and we take them out and we talk about kind of the higher purpose of education. And, and one of the things that we do really focus on is the importance of teaching our kids, for instance, about dialogue and how that's going, how important it's going to be. And we take our teachers through readings like that and some of the stuff I was sharing with Kim is where I got out of my meeting where the superintendents and the deans of schools get together and we were talking about the importance of that. And so, I'm just fortunate to be a part of that partnership, fortunate to have programs like that where our teachers get to step out and be a part of something and really reflect on those things. It makes us better educators and really better people. And when we do that, we have a better chance to make, help our kids become the same thing. So, just, just grateful for that partnership and for the, the comments on dialogue. I've been thinking so much about the exact same word, the one, that one word a lot lately and how you get, you know, our realm, which is political in nature at times, how you get to dialogue, um, because it can be a challenge and so, really appreciate that.
I want to publicly thank the superintendent too, who is a very, who is an excellent communicator. And, um, we, we talk all the time and I just want to, want you to know how much I appreciate that, that dialogue that we have and, and that I know you have with individual board members as well, so, thank you. Okay, Superintendent, do you have anything? All right, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting and move into executive session, um, that falls under section fifty-two, four or five of the Opens Meeting Act. Is there a motion to adjourn our meeting and move into executive session?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting and move into executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.